Wonderful. Commissioner Lindsay, there you are, coming. All right, for real this time, welcome to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, December 10, 2024, regarding the South Maui Community Plan. Director, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hippo Lito.
Here in my office.
Mahalo, Commissioner Dicos.
I'm on a boat on Pearl Harbor with 10 other crew. I'll be transitioning about 10 minutes to my vehicle.
Mahalo, Commissioner K'Lo Ha.
Good afternoon, I'm home alone and my family will probably come home in the next couple hours.
Mahalo, Commissioner Lindsay.
Hello, Mike Akko, from Waileku, I am alone.
Great, Commissioner Ward.
Present in the room.
Vice Chair Thompson.
You know, present.
Chair Thayer.
Yes, I'm here, thank you Director. And on this note of roll call, just a housekeeping note, we have a note from Vice Chair Thompson that he is going to have to leave at 5 o'clock, but we should still have quorum after that until our 7 o'clock typical ending time. Okay, so diving into our agenda, let us go, unless the department has anything to say first? Nope, okay. And just noting that we got in our packet the South Kihei table for the introduction of that section. So now, let us go into public testimony. Do we have anybody signed up to testify?
We'll do in person or on?
Yeah, we can do in person first and then go online.
Okay, in person will be Erin Mukai.
Hi, good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Erin Mukai. I'm with Pacific Rim Land, representing the landowner for the Maui Research and Technology Park. We've participated in the South Maui Community Plan update with the CPAC and now with the Commission. I'm here today because we continue to request the Community Plan designation of Special Purpose District, or SPD, for the entirety of the Maui Research and Technology Park. No other designation or combination of designations is appropriate. So there are three points that I'd like to highlight today. First point, the Maui Research and Technology Park is governed by its own zoning code, Chapter 19.38, which no one else has. We are a special district and consistent with the SPD designation. The Special Purpose District is intended to provide for specified land uses that, due to their uniqueness or incompatibility, did not easily fall within one or a combination of the other Community Plan designations. Second point, the Maui Research and Technology Park fits the SPD designation exactly. Our flexibility in use is only captured within the SPD designation. We have 40 permitted uses in our zoning code, all to support a growing community of innovation. Our allowable uses are unique, like nowhere else on Maui, supporting science, technology, and knowledge in the workplace and at home. These uses are not captured within the department's recommendations. Third point, multiple Community Plan designations would lead to inconsistencies and permitting issues. MRTP's land use designations are consistent now. So we have our own Community Plan designation of Maui Research and Technology Park. Our zoning is our own Maui Research and Technology Park District. We have a controlling plan that's based on meets and bounds, and this is part of our zoning code. This map already governs the uses on our property. This makes land use regulation clear, there's less chance for disagreement or misinterpretation. We don't need multiple Community Plan designations to add unnecessary complexity. The SPD designation is, for the entire Maui Research and Technology Park, is the best and only solution. And thank you for your time today and the opportunity to be here. I do have hard copies of written testimony that we previously submitted, just to get it on record again. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions Commissioners for the testifier? Vice Chair.
Sure, and thanks for coming in. How many acres do you guys have there?
It's, in its entirety, we're over 400 acres.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the Commission for the testifier?
Okay, seeing none, thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to online testimony, first person will be Ryan Churchill, to be followed by Johan Law.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Ryan Churchill with Pacific Rim Land, also providing comments on my research and tech park. I want to reiterate our position and the importance of our request that MRTP in its entirety be designated as Special Purpose District. There should not be any other designation, including a separate open space and park designations. As Erin said, the Community Plan provides for a Special Purpose District to address areas that do not easily fall within one or more of the other Community Plan designations. And that is us, our zoning is unique, and we already have a controlling plan that is defined by code. This is further defined by specific meets and bounds for our specific districts that the current Division of Planning regulates with every permit that is submitted. Having additional mapping later, layer, that attempts to create defined spaces creates inconsistencies, confusion, and unnecessary complexity. We've already seen firsthand struggles with mapping interpretations with the department. I'd like to share my screen if, if that's possible here.
You share screen.
Okay, are you seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, as you can see on the screen here, here's the South Maui CPAC recommendation on the left, the department's recommendation in the center, and our requested designation on the right. You'll see in the CPAC recommendation, the kind of like bluish area, purplish area is a Special Purpose District, and they've also attempted to map the the open space areas in there, in these small little areas, which are really kind of just washout areas or drainage areas, that a lot of them just dead end and go back to sheet flow. They're not major waterways or gulches. In the center, it's the department's recommendation, where you see is multiple layers of uses defined within this area. And in the far right, you'll see our requested Special District, which is just the entire area designated by Research and Technology as it is in the current Community Plan. The reason this is important is-
30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Is, if you see our controlling plan now, is, this is our controlling plan, this is part of our code. This is attached to our zoning ordinance, very specific. These areas are defined by meets and bounds with current planning. Our concern is when you go back to either a map, like the department's recommending, or even the CPAC's map, things don't line up perfectly. Basically, what planning is going to do is going to try to layer these up, and our concern is it leads to inconsistencies and problems. For example, this-
Oh, sorry, one second, you've hit your three minutes.
Anyways, to wrap it up, as Erin said, MRTP should be designated as a Special Purpose District as provided in our written testimony, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Questions for the testifier?
Yeah, about the, thanks Chair, the open space from the South Maui Community Plan? And are those open space in yours too, these are not places you're utilizing?
Yeah, so this light green is an attempt to mirror this light green, which is part of our zoning code. However, these dark greens are, some of these, like this areas, the subdivision recently went in. This area is gone already, these areas will be revised. This drainage here is coming through this open space, not here. So this, the CPAC's recommendation even conflicts with our actual zoning, as does, if you go over here, the department's recommendation, is these areas are no longer, they're just not, not part of the plan, they're not sensitive areas, they're just drainage areas during heavy, heavy storms. And when we build out the community, there'll be a master drainage plan that's already approved and grading permits, like down in this area. You see where this little drainage area on the department's recommendation is actually an outfall from, this is a large basin, which is going to go into the golf course as part of the drainage plan. So this area is not even going to exist, it's going to be graded. So these little, these little lines and things, although they don't seem like much on a Community Plan map, when we actually get into our permitting, it's very, adds complexity, and the current division will say, well, you can't do anything there, it has these green lines, when there's really nothing there to be protected.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the Commission for the testifier? Commissioner K'Lo Ha.
My question follows up, I think, on Commissioner Thompson, and maybe I just, I'm not totally getting it yet, so Mr. Churchill, maybe you can say it in a different way, but the dark green areas are open space designations because they're potentially drainage ways during major rain events, so you wouldn't want to build there anyways. So why, why would you want-
I think that's the distinction, they're not major drainage ways. These are, are just small erosion areas, basically. And so, when we come in with our development plan, for example, we currently have grading permits, I don't know if you can see my cursor? That has basins along the top of our property that are catching water, and that water then filters through additional basins going through here and desilts the water and cleans the water, and it continues down. This is a large existing basin of many acres and like 30 feet of depth. It gets desilted again in that area. So the water flow coming through here is being modified, just as part of your typical grading permits that you're, you're going through the process, because it's such a large area that there's a master drainage plan coming all the way through here. And for example, I think this map on the far left shows it best. This little area goes away, and then this is enhanced as a larger drainage area. So as I talked about, our drainage coming Malka Makai, be caught, go through a series of basins here, go through this ditch here, and then go into this large basin here, which then further goes into the golf course and gets desilted, there's additional basin down at the bottom. And so, having these, these little things don't, you know, it sits right in the middle of what's a residential neighborhood. For example, and, you know, this area has all, already been approved as part of permits from the county with work to begin next month in this area, so it's, it's it's kind of after the fact already, and same thing down here. This has been modified and approved with roads going to the south. So if you came up and look at it, you know, it's kind of like, you know, just little washout areas. You can see how it just dead ends, it's not really a major drainage way, you know, like you see with, you know, these major gulches.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Other than the map, are there like distinguished TMKs in those park and open space designations? Because I could see an error in just going over a map. So, yeah.
So, so these lots, so we can see the lots here, TMKs, and this is a large TMK, which is currently going to, subdivisions almost complete for single family. So this will be all single family lots down here. This area has about a dozen lots.
More specifically, the park and open space designation on the South Maui Community Plan recommendation, those green areas is kind of what I'm focusing on, because I see that you're going to develop out the other parts that aren't in the green, kind of?
They are not yet, separate lots, but they will be. For example, this green area will be part of the road lot, if I can go back to this map. See this, this is a roadway lot as part of the pending subdivision. So that, that green area is in there. This green area, this will be its own lot, a drainage way lot. We're not doing a subdivision up here now. This will be its own lot, which is in a pending subdivision, as will this drainage way. And so our concern is, and this whole area, we've gone through a couple years of process with current planning, this was just a colored map that went in on the zoning, and now we've converted this to actual meets and bounds. And an example is, we spent months back and forth trying to decide exactly where this green circle is. The point was five feet there, five feet there.
Yeah, because it could be anywhere really, if you don't have it to scale. Or one is a little bit off, your cursor is a little bit off, it's, it is a little confusing, thank you for clarifying.
Further questions, Commissioner Dicos.
Thank you Chair, I'm a little confused, so the map on the left is showing all the purple is Special Purpose District, but I think you pointed out that there's already residential being built in what the South Maui Community Plan is wanting Special Purpose District.
Yes, the Special Purpose District, you know, covers the Maui Research and Technology Park zoning. And so we're in active process of developing this area, well, this entire area with single family, multifamily affordable in this area. And so, this area is, already has an approved grading permit, as does, as this area with construction to commence and about-
Hold on one second, there's, somebody else has their sound on, distracting. Okay, I think you can continue.
Yeah, so Commissioner Dicos, the Community Plan process is going parallel with our development process. So we're, we're actually going to be grading this area, starting in January, as this area has just completed the past couple months with additional commercial subdivision going to the south. So if you come back in six months from now, you know, this stuff's not going to even exist.
Okay.
And so it's just, it's just, I think my point is, this stuff's manini to have on a Community Plan scale. Here, their Community Plan's trying to show, you know, this tiny traffic circle. Here's what this circle is. As you see here, I mean, we're already required, this is the zoning map. We're already required to have this, and now we're going to have to sit with planning and say, okay, what does our zoning map show compared to the Community Plan map? And it's just, you know, that doesn't make sense, this zoning map governs. This is approved by the council, this is attached to our zoning code, our zoning codes, its own zoning code. It's not unique just to this area, and so that's why we believe the, you know, the, the Special District, Special Purpose District should govern as shown here in the far right.
Okay. Okay, I'm still confused how you got residential inside the Maui Research Tech Park. If that's supposed to be science and special use, but-
That's, we're permitted for up to 1,250 residential units up here.
Okay.
And so, so that, that, the name was originally was the Maui Research and Technology Park, and that zoning was changed in 2017, I believe, Commissioner Dicos.
Okay, okay, thank you for that, thank you Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you Chair. I guess I'm maybe just a little confused, if you have residential, why would you not want it to be representative residential? Because part of our preview or purview is looking at everything, so as we're making decisions, we're looking at it holistically, so not knowing that there's homes potentially in an area, we may not approve, recommend homes in a different area, or we might say, wait, there's more continuity, we want to do that, so having it just as purple doesn't, by perspective, does not provide the guidance, I think, to make informed decisions. So if you, if you, you know what's going in, why would we not, why would you be opposed to having it color coded to the appropriate designation?
Because our zoning, as Erin mentioned, is very flexible. Our residential allows single family, multifamily apartments, townhomes, actually allows commercial, small stores in the residential area, which is this yellow area you see here. And so we're unique, if you look at our zoning code, there's just a multiple of uses that are allowable. And so we don't want to be restricted by a set use that say, you know, residential, if we want to do something else or a different type. And that's why, you know, the, the, even the planning department's recommendation has a small town center and transient oriented corridor. Our uses are so broad and unique that we're looking for a Community Plan that matches and doesn't restrict what's allowed in the zoning.
Can I just ask to flesh out this information a bit further, which may help Commissioner Ward with his questions? On that zoning map, would you be able to read out, because the legend is really small for us on the screen that we have? Would you be able to explain each type of zoning, the different colors that you have within this?
Sure, the, the yellow is residential. And again, as I mentioned, the residential adds, although it's residential, has all types of uses. The salmon are kind of peckish color, it's what we call our mixed use, that's the most dense area, and that's primarily going to be multifamily housing. The blue is civic, and that's restricted to government, education, recreation, and medical uses. The green, as we talked about, is the open space areas and park areas. And the purple is what they call employment campus, and that's primarily commercial and Maui, you know, tech park related type uses, and does not allow, you know, certain specific residential. So I think what, what we're saying is, you know, we've gone through the process to have this specific zoning that the council approved in 2017 in this governing map. And when the council approved it, it's got the, you know, the Community Plan, which calls the entire area the Maui Research and Tech Park District, and we're just looking for that consistency, so we're not in with the planning department debating exactly where this green circle is, or that green circle is, or where this boundary may be along this green line compared to what the Community Plan map shows.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you Chair. So I guess where I'm still maybe a little confused is, if it's already built out, you know it's there. So why would we not want to have it?
It's not built out. And so, we're getting ready to build it out, but we don't have anything, subdivisions pending in this upper area or further in this southern area.
On the, on the zoning map, would you be able to indicate what of that has been built out versus not?
This, this core area here. Maui Bruins right, right here, my cursor is. Here's the Kihei Charter School up here, the corner. You can kind of see the lots on this map. These lots is the area, is the area that's built out. What's shown on the far right is consistent with the current Community Plan, which is basically what we're asking for. And again, that's governed by this detailed controlling plan. And so, you know, we've gone through, through great lengths to create the meets and bounds and have the specific areas and have agreement with the current planning on this.
A quick question, you said you had some flexibility in the uses that are allowed within the zoning district. Can you explain that, how that, like, so the different types of zoning uses that are allowed in the controlling map? Is there wiggle room in those, or the areas that say residential is only going to be residential? Or can like polygon change to somewhere else in the-
It's not like a project district, or like the planned unit development, like Wailea, the, the, these areas don't change. You know, this, we can't just move it unilaterally. This is kind of the set, set map, so these polygons don't move, and that's why we've pegged these with meets and bounds with the planning department, so we have an agreement that, hey, this line, you know, it's mixed use on this side, employment district on that side. But we can't say, move this salmon color to, you know, to the south area and swap them like you, like you could do in the planned unit developments, or even the project districts. So this project in Waikapu Town, I think, are the only two that have kind of their unique unique zoning category, which was based off a form-based code. And so I think that two of us, us and Waikapu, were the more recent rezonings, which planning department has been preferring the form-based code with a mix of uses and integrated community, you know, with, with employment, center, education, and residential, which is what we have here.
Vice Chair.
Thanks Chair. Actually, can I get the county to weigh in, Karen, do you have some input there for us?
Right now you're doing testimony, but when it's time for discussion, I-
Oh yeah, we got to save your question, write down your question, and we can ask it after.
Alright, thanks.
You can have question for the testifier at this point. Okay, any additional questions for the testifier from the Commission? Okay, I think I'm seeing none, so thank you again for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up, Johan Law, and then Roy from TIN.
Hello, Johan Law, testifying on behalf of myself. I wanted to fill you in on some of the stuff that has been discussed already by previous testifiers, so the first thing we did almost on the South Maui Community Plan was go over the existing Kihei McKenna Community Plan and adapt the maps to the new designations. And that was toward the end of when Kate was still there. And one thing that the planners were all very adamant about was that Special Purpose District is not like a catchall, and it's not the same as Project District, it's really four things that really don't fit other categories, like airports and stuff like that. I'm not sure why MRTP cares, because I think TOC lets them do everything they want to do, or even or even, um, uh, small town center or like neighborhood center. But if anything, I would just make the entire area TOC, uh, except for the, um, gulches or like whatever areas are needed to be designated as protected for like cultural resources and stuff like that. I, I can see their point on some of the other protected areas, like the median between the, um, lanes of the road and like the roundabouts and stuff like that. So maybe there's some flexibility there, but overall I think TOC doesn't make sense. And, um, this is a, a really good place to build, um, the stuff they have planned, basically, because it's a, it's a, there's already existing businesses, existing jobs, uh, mass transit, all that kind of stuff. One thing is that, uh, the, one of the gulches that goes out of that Big Basin they have, I think the, um, the modeling that we did showed that like, if that overflows, it's going to flow down past the golf course and then it to the neighborhood that is right north of the, the Safeway. Um, and so I think it is important to protect those, those gulches, to protect people downstream. And, and that's my general thing is you have to protect people downstream from what happens upstream. And I think that's, oh, uh, you're probably going to hear from folks who are like vacation rental owners um, about all of the designations in South Kiai. And they would probably want to convert those to hotel. Um, I think it's important to keep, uh, residential as residential because, um, it's, because that's how we did things to match zoning. So I think, um, you know, anything that potentially in the future, we still less residential, less housing is something to be avoided. So.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions, commissioners for the testifier? Okay, seeing none, thank you again.
Last testifier, Rory Frampton.
Uh, Rory Frampton online? Is he still online? Mr. Frampton, are you there? Meanwhile, if anybody else would like to testify, please write your name in the chat so staff can put you on the list. Otherwise, we're coming to the end of public testimony.
Okay. I'm sorry, this is Rory. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, please go ahead.
I don't know what was happening, but, um, anyways. Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Rory Frampton, um, and I represent Haleakala and Koloulu Ranches. I first just want to note that at the last meeting, you voted to include the planning commissions, uh, planning departments recommended policies for Kia Maoka. I was planning on testifying to express the need for staged infrastructure implementation. However, I was told the policies were not on the agenda and wouldn't be discussed. I don't want to get into that now, but I'm just putting a placeholder for myself on those policies and plan to bring up our concerns when it come up, when it comes up for final review. Today, I'd just like to focus on Haleakala Ranch's proposed Keokea Industrial Subdivision, um, which is located in Southern Area Three. At your last meeting, there was a discussion and recognition of the need for industrial areas in Kiai, especially for business owners wanting to own their own properties. That's the precise goal of this project. I previously provided detailed testimony and would like to offer some highlights. The area is a logical location for such a project, given existing and surrounding uses. The property is home to P V Sullivan's Materials Recycling Facility, whose operator Pete Sullivan has testified in support of this proposal. The site is adjacent to the wastewater treatment facility, the existing Goodfellow Industrial Baseyard, and Bear Monsanto's facility to the south. To the north, there is a golf course and a solar farm. These adjacent uses make this location ideal for industrial development. The area is not visible from Pealani Highway. And potable water, R1 water, and electrical services are available to service the site. We presented this idea to the CPAC. However, at the time, we hadn't flushed out a lot of the, the details. When it came up for reconsideration at CPAC, we asked that it be deferred to the planning commission so that we could further refine the project and engage with KCA's Design Review Committee. We did a more detailed study of the site, and the project area was reduced in size to provide a generous area for stormwater management and to avoid some areas with steeper slopes. Through several meetings with KCA, we developed a detailed set of conditions addressing community concerns, including limitations on potential uses, stormwater management, and project design. These are conditions in my testimony. Again, the primary objective of this project is to create opportunities for local business owners to own their own land for their operations. Testimony at the last meeting highlighted a similar project in Playahuunui, where nearly all occupants, occupants were owner-users. Um, in addition to fostering business ownership, the project would promote South Maui's self-sufficiency and reduce, and reduce traffic congestion. It would provide a local base for businesses operating in South Maui, including those supporting the visitor industry and resort areas to the south, thus reducing trips through North Kiai. I'm available to answer any questions or provide more information on other items in my testimony, including the proposed native planting area along Pealani Highway and the repair and restoration project along Keokea Gulch. Thank you very much, and I apologize. I couldn't get my video to go on either, so, um, anyways, I'm here for, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your testimony. Uh, we can hear you loud and clear even without the video. There's any questions for the testifier? See some people checking notes. No? Commissioner Ward? No. Okay, all right. Uh, thank you for, or I guess I have one clarifying question. Um, you said you, um, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said you did bring this up to CPAC, but you weren't ready yet with enough project detail? Is that what happened?
Yeah, the, the, we did, we took, brought, it came up for a vote. I mean, we, we put it in front of the CPAC, but they had a lot of questions that, um, we didn't have detailed answers for. And so the first time it came up, they voted to not, not, not accept it. Then it was brought up for reconsideration. And there was a motion for reconsideration, and we actually got up and asked that, uh, we, 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 we recognized that we didn't have enough details in there for the CPAC to take a vote. And we, um, basically said that we'd be presenting it to the planning commission. And since that time, we've done a lot more study of the site. We did a site analysis, uh, we did engagement with the community. We've come up with that detailed list of, uh, conditions to address, um, concerns that were expressed by the community. And I think at this point, we're, we're comfortable that it's a, it's at a point where it could be, the concept could be included in the, um, community plan. And I'll just note that, you know, thi- this is obviously, this is just, if it gets in the community plan, we'd still have to go through a state district boundary amendment and a change in zoning. So there'd be a lot more detailed discussion on this project as it moves forward.
Um, and just real fast, would you be able to highlight for us the questions that CPAC had for you about the project?
They were asking, they were, they were concerned about a blanket, like if it was just designated industrial, what types of uses could go in there? They weren't really sure. We spent a lot of time since then identifying what uses would be appropriate. And we, we, we know that that would be a condition of zoning. But we've gone through those discussions and, and, um, developed those. I think, to me, that was the biggest one, was just the unknown of the types of uses that would go in there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, commissioners, any other questions for the testifier? Oh, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your testimony. Did you just mention, I, I thought, I think you just mentioned, I just would like to clarify that you said that you would be going outside the growth boundaries. Is that correct?
That's correct. This, this project would be outside of the growth boundaries. But as was, as was discussed at the last meeting, that's allowable. And it was anticipated when they adopted the, um, Chapter Two Eighty B that controls the, these decennial updates. And it, it actually says that, uh, if there's an, if there's a need or if there's a desire to include an area that was not, in the Maui Island Plan, it says, where a decennial revision to a community plan, and that's what this is, a decennial revision to a community plan directly triggers an amendment to the general plan, such matters shall be processed concurrently. So, so they did anticipate that when they adopted Two Eighty B. And, um, that's what would be happening here is that it would also be an expansion of the urban growth boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, commissioners, further questions for the testifier? Okay, seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Okay, has anybody else signed up to testify? Okay, uh, last call for testimony, going once, going twice, three times. Testimony is closed. Okay, commissioners, um, do you have follow-up questions for the department on anything that was brought up in testimony? Vice Chair.
Thank you. Put it rewind for a second, um, for the, uh, the technology part. Can you flesh out what, how the, uh, the county stands on that?
I think I'll start, and then perhaps, uh, staff can help fill in. So one of the testifiers mentioned that when we created these, these different community plan designations, special purpose district was set up for things like airports. It was in fact, the, all of the community plan designations were kind of born out of this recognition that project districts are not exactly working. But they are right. Like, they are, they were coming out of a place that our code was not keeping up with the times. And so we said, all right, we're going to start with the community plan, and we're going to create place types. And then within these place types, we're going to be able to have multiple uses, mixing uses, and all kinds of things. But it's really going to be about the intensity of those spaces. So as far as where the planning department stands on this, special purpose district is absolutely inappropriate for the Maui Research and Technology Park. That's where the department stands on it. Second, um, we think that transit-oriented centers or corridors, sorry. It keeps changing. It used to be transit-oriented communities when we started this, and so I'm a little stuck. Transit-oriented corridor is appropriate. A mix of transit-oriented corridor, uh, small town center and residential is, I think, what we're proposing and we're suggesting. And that was based on what we know about their uses. And, and, um, the testifiers who have spoken know that we know their uses very well because we interact with them quite regularly. So really, trans-oriented, transit, transit-oriented corridor is the most appropriate use for the vast majority of that space. And nothing that is in their zoning is that special that it does not fit in, in this designation. I, I, I'm not sure if planners have anything to add, but I, I welcome their ideas because they think about this a lot more. That was what I would have said, but I can also read you their zoning code if that's something you want to hear. It basically matches.
Oh, Director?
Also to Kurt from Current Planning, who you've talked with many, many times on other projects, um, is still around. I'm trying to see if he's available. So if there's any specific questions that he might be able to answer those about the actual project and the relationship between the project proponent and, and current.
Did you have something to add?
So this is Jackie. So the details for Maui Research and Tech Park are in Chapter nineteen point three eight of the zoning code. And it's very specific, like how, just like this map that, um, the testifier showed you is actually from the, um, Maui County Code. So it's all spelled out in, in there. I think what the department is saying is that based on the, um, map and the locations of the different, um, designations in there, there could be, um, community plan designations that fit with, with the uses that are spelled out in nineteen three eight.
Sense. Um, asking this another way, so would putting in, uh, well, I guess for looking at the department's map. So, um, would putting in, or, uh, the designation of transit-oriented corridor and small town center, would that create inconsistencies with anything that they would try to do? Like when you're, if you need to process any kind of entitlements or anything, like anything that they're trying to do within their boundaries? Would these designations preclude them or create any kind of obstacles?
So for the first part of your question, um, so, sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to organize my thought here. But basically, transit-oriented center or corridor, sorry, transit-oriented corridor is designed for the uses that are envisioned in Maui Research and Technology Park at the intensity that they're bringing proposed. Where I will agree with the testifiers is that where open space and park are located probably does matter. And that may be something that the commission wants to discuss because those will have an impact. Those are different. I do believe that we used their own plan, though, to generate where those places would be, with the exception of gulches.
There is also a policy for the open space regarding gulches that's set, that you guys included to say that the gulches can be moved if necessary to align with where they actually exist so that natural drainage way can, can be prioritized. We'll also say that that was the one thing that CPAC did not. It did specifically come up about moving the park, open space, and CPAC did not make a, uh, make a motion to do it. It was discussed, though.
Um, and then similar question for the small town center portion. Would that affect anything that they're trying to do?
It is a lower intensity than the transit-oriented corridor, but it aligns with their plans.
Would it make sense to, instead of trying to like line up on the, all the maps where the park spaces are, would it make sense to just include those as either transit-oriented corridor or small town center, depending on where those fall?
I'll take that one. So parks are a use that's allowed in transit-oriented center. So, I mean, the, the value of pointing them out is saying, this is where they're going to be. But if you are, if the, if they are planning to be, move those around and, and their zoning allows that, then fine. I mean, I think that's why I brought it up. Why I think that if you were going to play with anything, I would stay, I would go to transit-oriented corridor. And then if you want to, you could leave out those designations to allow them some flexibility. And in addition to that, you could put in policies that, that support open space in that, in that area. I don't think we have any drafts of something like that, but it's an idea.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Ke'oloa.
I guess this is a, um, question to the department, too, is I'm, one of the other testifiers had mentioned that when they model, I, I guess my, my worry is always like the flooding issue. But, I mean, it's everybody's worry as well. But there, one of the testifiers said that they modeled something and overflow of one of the drainage ways would potentially affect another housing project. Do you remember anything, like, is that a concern for you?
Kihei flooding issue, the.
Um, that specific drainage way that the testifier was talking about. Like if we do what the director says and just take away the green spaces, is there, do you think there's going to be an issue with that drainage, specific drainage way? Do you remember anything about that?
The drainage ways as modeled by the department, I think it's five acres they're taking into account. And as the first testifiers, I think it was the first testifier, said that it's major rain events that cause these drainage ways to run. That's when there's flooding.
Sorry, was that a question to me?
No.
Director?
I'm not sure that I understand your question, Commissioner Kealoha. And maybe that's, that's part of the problem.
Yeah, I think from what I remember, and it was a very quick mention of this, one of the testifiers said that the reason that these green open space designations are there was because I'm assuming at some point, well, he said that they modeled these drainage ways. And it showed that when one of these drainage ways would overflow potentially when it, in a major rain event, that it would overflow into another Kihei residential area above Safeway. Do you remember that testimony?
Vaguely, and we're, we're all kind of going kind of, but not, not deeply.
I guess that was my question was if this stood out to you as a concern? And I'm guessing that it doesn't stand out as a concern or you don't, or else you would remember it. So I, that kind of answers my question.
Okay, any further clarifying questions for the department? Okay, Commissioner Lindsay, it looks like you wrote a message. Maybe my eyes are not good enough to see it.
It's just saying she's not authenticated.
Okay, okay. You're off the hook. All right, so let us go down in order of our agenda then. So we have our Section 3.3, the subarea map and description for South Kihei. And, oh, Director?
Just one thing, Kurt is available at this time. And so if there are questions regarding Maui Research and Technology Park, a deeper dive into that, Kurt may be able to answer those questions. He's been the planner that's processed most of their permits.
Oh, okay, all right, yep, we can, yeah, since we're on this train, we might as well keep writing it. So does anybody have any questions for Planner Kurt Wolenhop about the Research and Technology Park?
Hey Chair, Commissioners.
Yes.
Yeah. I was just wondering if, I don't know when all the, you know, when this was in the CPAC and it was understood what they were planning to build out there? And did the department make their recommendations with the mixed use zoning? Why did the CPAC push back against it and keep it all one zoning?
There's multiple people who will be able to answer that.
Trying to think back.
The, I think it was just to support, the testifiers came forward and said their uses could not align with the updated designations. The department does not feel that that is accurate. I don't remember any other. And I watched the meeting today.
From my recollection, Chair, I don't recall seeing specific details around what the plan looked like at that time. So I think we defaulted to that was special project because we didn't have some of the details of that, if I recall correctly.
Sounds accurate.
So we didn't, so we didn't have the opportunity to say, oh, this should be residential, this should be this or that is.
Okay, you didn't get into.
We didn't have enough clarity around what, what it was going to look like.
Okay.
If, if I can recall correctly.
Okay. Commissioner DeCoste, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I guess just to hear from the planner on this, because you're probably most, have the most intimate knowledge of this project. So given everything you know about their current and future plans. Oh, is Mr. Wolenhop here?
Oh, hi, yes, I'm here.
All right.
But my, my perspective though is going to be from the historical.
Okay.
Like what, how the, how that got rezoned. If you're talking about the community plan change, that's, that's not been something that I, I processed it through the time that it got all of its entitlements to be a form-based code. So I'm more of a historical and what they're doing right now.
Okay. Commissioners, would you have, want to hear that history? I'm seeing yes, maybe? Okay, yeah, yeah, Mr. Wolenhop, if you could give us that background?
Well, Ryan Churchill probably also, but briefly, you know, this was Senator Inouye years and years ago, had a hope that this was going to be a generation high technology generator. And that this was then called the Kihei Research and Technology Park, considerably smaller than it is today. And it did have success. It was based sort of on maybe what we call around Palo Alto and Stanford, the, the great technology parks there. As you go up Lopoa, you have the, the Grand Boulevard. And then the buildings are set back and you have the High Technology Performance Center. And, and, and to a great degree, that, that was successful in, in that, in that era. But the era has changed. They had different ownership, I believe. And it became then the possibility of making it much larger. It became the Maui Research and Technology Park. And it would become almost a new community. And as they've said, there is going to be an area where people are going to be able to live. There's going to be a mixed use center with a range of opportunities, entertainment, dining. There's going to be the heart of the park, which is the high technology. But it's going to be much more than a detached park from the rest of Kihei. It was going to be an integrated community. And I think that that's what we're hoping. There's going to be life interjected back into it. Much of the, the, the form, if you will, and, and you're going to learn about this as we look into the new code. But much of the form was pushing the buildings closer in, putting the parking behind, making it a much more human scaled center of living, working. It, it really is work, live, play, all in one place. So that's what the Planning Commission back then and, and the council had their hopes and, and we are hoping that that's what it's going to be. You have the Maui Brews, you have the Charter School, you have the high technology components, you've got housing coming in at various different levels. So I, I think that that's the hope for what this park can now become. So that's the historical change from a pure science park to now an integrated community. So that's the background.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on, in the description of this area of change in the version of the community plan we are reviewing before us, there's a sentence at the end that says, "The majority of the MRTP is governed by Chapter 19.38." Do you know what part is not in there?
Oh, yes, well, the, yes, and, and, and much confusion this all led to. There are a very, very few lot owners, very few. I don't, Ryan would know exactly, but we're only talking, I think maybe six or seven parcel holders who would not agree to move from the old code of the Kihei Research and Technology Park to the new code. So they, for whatever reason, I believe one of them was the United States Post Office. They just, they, they would not adapt to this new code. So they, that's why we had to contain inside of the current code the Kihei Research and Technology Park Ordinance. And we have the Maui Research Technology Park Ordinance. The Maui one reflects much more current planning techniques of moving buildings closer to the street. They have the forms, they have the designs. Whereas the Kihei one was much more of a historical remnant. But we've tried many times to contact those people. They simply didn't want to be part of moving to a different code. And that's fine. They just are, they just are following the old Kihei Research and Technology Park setbacks, heights, uses and things like that. And the vast majority of the very few lots are in the core district. There's a couple near Maui Brews, there's one on the other side of Lopoa Parkway. We don't feel as if that's going to be a deleterious effect on the overall build out of the park. It just is a historical remnant that is going to be with us for a long time. So mostly it affects the design and the setbacks of the buildings that can go on these very few parcels. Thank you.
Yep, thank you for that. Uh, any additional questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none. Since we are on this section and we've been talking pretty in-depth on it, would we want to just go forth with our finishing any action you might want to take or not take on the Maui Research and Technology Park? I guess, put it another way, is there any action anybody wants to take on this? With respect to the map? Keep us presented, change.
Chair, if you can work in there?
Yes, Ms. Comquitt.
It did just remember the challenge with it was that the CPAC did not like the transit oriented corridor being designated on there. But that is the designation that aligns with their zoning. So this is a more reflective map. They didn't like the scale and density of a transit oriented corridor for the area and just for Kihei in general. That sound right?
So is that, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add, the transit oriented corridor was not well, was not well embraced by CPAC in general, just because of its density, the amount of volume that it would create, the stackable housing. So pretty much, I think there was a couple that's planning suggested that we pulled out for that specific reason.
There's pretty much no transit oriented corridor within this. Almost, doesn't look like hardly any TOC designation.
Think there's any TOC designations. But regardless of if it is designated as TOC or not, this is TOC.
Yeah, but if I, if I recall, the only areas that we had designated TOC was the Triangle.
Yeah, Maalaya.
Maalaya and the Gateway. And we pulled that, the Gateway out because I said that parcel's so small, you can't really do much else with it.
There was also an industrial area by, what is it? It's where the, my eye doctor is, okay?
Oh, yes. Okay, so yes, so CPAC didn't want any TOC and was more comfortable with the special purpose district for this area. Okay. Yeah, so Commissioners, is there anything you want to do with this area of change? Looks like nothing at this point. Which is okay. Then we can just go back to the top of the agenda. I was just figuring, since we've been discussing it so much, we finish, follow through with the discussion.
Chair, if I could, I, I, because I'll make a motion to accept the department's recommendations for at least discussion purposes for on this, like, kind of let's wrap it up to a degree. So I'll put forth a motion to accept department's recommendations.
Okay. Yes, second by Vice Chair Thompson in style. Okay, would you like to speak to your motion?
I don't think I did say anything specific other than just really, we're in kind of the midst of discussing it, so let's just finish it up.
Chew on.
But let's make a decision.
Okay. Vice Chair?
So if we go department recommendations, what does the owner lose out on? Just flexibility?
The department recommendations include the open space and parks. So you know, that, that flexibility, if you will, would be diminished.
So those have to stay in those areas that those are mapped on here? And it was, and that's with TOC?
Yes, or, or they would, or they could request to move them. Like they can, they can go through the process to change them, but that's kind of a pain. So I can, I can understand why they would request that those areas not be included and allow some flexibility there.
Okay. You think that's the, the main culprit in the, in this whole plan? It's just from the open space? Or those designated areas?
I would say, I, I was not there for CPAC, so I cannot speak to the, the TOC, the feelings on TOC. I think there's probably just misunderstanding about TOC. I think there's an assumption that it's meant to be like Honolulu. That is not true. It's meant to be probably the highest intensity that's on the island, but not. I think, you know, from the department, I can only speak from the department's perspective. If, if we were able to get you to recognize that it is transit oriented corridor, the, the, the designation of the parks and where they are is less, less critical to us because still zoning is going to underlie all of this as well. So just keep in mind, it's really about reflecting the intensity and the type of, the type of space that you're creating. And like I said, special purpose district was predominantly meant for things like airports that are just weird, that you just don't have those everywhere. But it was meant to reflect this.
Okay, further discussion from the commission? Commissioner Lindsay?
I remember when the Research and Technology Park was, you know, the, going to be a supercomputer and all these things. And I feel like that dream isn't dead yet. That being said, I'm kind of leaning towards the South Mye community plan designation or removing it completely. Because, because then it'll give them the flexibility with the special zoning, the special uses that was, that has been there.
Thank you. Anybody?
And it seems like they do have a plan. You know, there was a plan, they have a plan for that area. And I think it is within the best interest of the South Mye community to have a, a real planned development there in a place where it's supposed to be planned. That's all.
Other Commissioners? Deliberation? So Commissioner DeCoste, is that your head?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm always reluctant to change what CPAC has done. You know, unless there's really strong reason. This is, this, this parcel is very confusing to me. I love the, the idea of this special use and the tech park, but then I hear all about this residential commercial. And so I'm very confused of what's going on there. The, maybe there is a miscommunication of transient corridor, but I, I certainly understand that community's concern for density, right? We're always fighting density. It's always way more than what they expected. So I'm a bit sympathetic there, but this is, um, the key infusing one for me. So I'm on the fence.
Is there anything that can be done to help alleviate your confusion, to make things clearer for you? So you can make a solid decision? Like what, what, what would you need to be clarified to help you out?
I guess I'm just yeah, based on what was stated that the discussion in the CPAC, it sounded like the main, but we haven't heard a lot of testimony against this. Seems in alignment, the CPAC seems in alignment with what the landowner wants other than the green spaces. I am concerned about the buffering, removing any of the buffering. So anyway, uh, I forget how many members we have on. But, um, I guess I'm leaning towards the CPAC recommendation, just because it would allow, it sounds like it would allow everything that they wanted to do and would allow what the department is recommending as well. The department would just tighten it up a bit more. Is my understanding.
Okay. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. To the planning department, based on what you know on the plans and the zoning, does any of that conflict with policies as they currently are written? And if it does, what supersedes what?
So I can't think of any conflicts. What I will say is there's a lot of really great detail in transient, transient, transient TOC. There's a lot of great detail in TOC about what that community should look and feel like. And it actually is really in alignment with what is being proposed in Maui Research and Technology Park. But if you look at special purpose district intentionally, there's not a lot of detail there. And, um, and so for our planners, this is, this is not the best possible outcome if we leave it as a special purpose district. But if it's the will of the commission, that's what we'll take forward to council.
Commissioner Hippolito?
You, Chair. From my perspective, this morning, we spent quite a bit of hours looking at Pulelihua. A lot of things was outlined, they had a great plan. And looking at the landowners' plan, they spent quite a bit of time in outlining what they would like to see this area to become. And from what I heard from the landowner was that the homes that was questioned is something that they have to do. So coming up with plans, it's, uh, you know, we can tear apart plans, but to come up with ideas, to look at what can benefit our community, it, it takes, it takes time, it takes effort. You know, um, so from my perspective, I'm, I'm leaning towards, uh, leaving it as a SPD as, um, requested by the, the landowner.
Thank you, Commissioner Hippolito. Any other comments from our discussion from anybody? Otherwise we can call for the vote. Okay, seeing none. Yep. Commissioner Hippolito?
No.
Commissioner Dicos?
No.
Commissioner Kaloja?
No.
Commissioner Lindsay? Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson, or Vice Chair Thompson, apologize.
That's all right. And sorry, Brian, I'll go with a no.
Pass anyway.
That's, yes, five.
One in favor.
One, yes. Okay, so motion does not carry. All right, back to the drawing board, commissioners. Thank you for getting the discussion going.
Yeah, so we had option A, B, or C. B is gone.
Yes. What, Commissioner Hippolito?
Uh, question for Director, um, Director, my question, clarifying question is your, the department's proposal is basically to give guidance for the planners? Is that the intent?
Mahalo for your question. So the, the purpose of the community plan is really to set the groundwork for all change that's going to happen in the South Maui community in the next 20 years or beyond, depending on how long it takes for us to get back to this community. So hopefully it's supposed to be every 10 years that we do so. But we're looking at the next 20 years and we're saying like, if growth occurs in this area, what should it look like? In the case of Maui Research and Technology Park, we looked at the plans for Maui Research and Technology Park and said, this is consistent with our transit oriented corridor designation. This is what it is. So that, the planners, when the project comes in and, and they have to consult the South Maui community plan, they will look at the designation and they will say, yep, what's being proposed is consistent with that.
And a follow up question is when the landlord presented, he said he has been working with your department to coming up with some of these plans and so forth. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct with our current planning division. And Kurt, who is, may still be on the call, is the planner they've been working with.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, commissioners, further questions or, uh, new motion? Vice Chair.
Might as well move it along here. Like to make a motion for option C, the, uh, SPD.
Okay, completely. So no, um, no park or open space, it's just all in, um, SPD.
Yeah.
Okay. Second from Commissioner Lindsay. Hey, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lindsay?
No comments, Chair.
Okay. Uh, discussion, deliberation, commissioners? Vice, uh, Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. Call me what, whatever you want to call me. I guess I would disagree with removing parks. I, I certainly don't want to create challenges, but parks were an important component that, uh, from the CPAC perspective. And by eliminating those, one, in theory, could not put parks in, they could just opt not to. So I think having some of the designations from my perspective is helpful. I think it's also helpful, again, if you're looking at the plan at holistic level, that you can start to say, oh, that park really should go over here because it's too far a gap from other parks. Or that residential shouldn't go there because it's right next to commercial. Or it just, I think for me, it gives me a much better understanding of what it's going to look, look like and how things should be connected or not connected. But just being a special project district, it, it doesn't give you insight as to what that's going to look like, so to speak. So, no.
I just want. Yes, no, appreciate it.
Comment that, um, for where the parks are going to go, um, the planners would go to chapter 1938 of the zoning code because it's specified there. All of that, all of where everything is going to be is in chapter 1938 of the zoning code. And that's what makes this area so challenging because it's, it's kind of, it's very unique, as they keep saying. But it's all in the, the zoning code. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. Good for clarifying, uh, question. So based on what you just stated, the coloring on this map, community plan, I don't want to say is kind of irrelevant in the aspect, because they're going to have to go to the zoning code. And that's where the planners are going to go. So from my perspective, I would like to at least see some of the colors. Because again, from just a perspective, looking at it holistically, you can at least say, okay, we know that this is going to be a higher density. We know that this is where some residential is. As long as they have the flexibility, you have to go through the zoning. I don't see where the struggle is with actually having some of the color coded. Cause it sounds as if it's mapped to what the zoning is. Is that, did I just answer my own clarifying question?
Helps to talk through it sometimes, yes.
It is mapped according to the zoning code. Um, this is the picture of the zoning code. It's what I have in front of me and it's the exact map. So yes, that is, they're approved as of now.
Okay, so it sounds like Commissioner Ward, you would be more in support of the CPAC map.
Uh, the CPAC.
Just because it has the parks, well, the parks person, parks designation portion of the CPAC map.
If I had to pick between A and C, yes, I would go with A. I still prefer B.
Okay. And I guess, uh, if I can ask a question of the department. So hearing the CPAC concerns of the level of density within, uh, the TOC designation, is there any kind of like density control or allowance in the SPD designation?
Thank you for that question. No, um, the, it, we can read it to you. I think Jackie probably has it open right now. And she can read you the exact words and there aren't many.
The special purpose district community plan designation is intended to provide for specified land uses that due to their uniqueness or incompatibility, do not easily, easily fall within one of the other community plan designations. This district applies to airports and may also include established project districts that do not easily fall within one or more of the other community plan designations. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioners? Okay, so we have, I think the motion on the table is option C. So complete designation as special purpose district. Not quite a friendly amendment from Commissioner Ward. Short of that. Um, any other discussion from anyone? Okay, looks if no further discussion, I think we can call for a vote. Commissioner Hippolito?
I.
Commissioner Dicos?
Uh, this is on option C, right?
Correct.
Uh, no.
Commissioner Kaloja?
No.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
No.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
That is three noes. Okay.
Three.
So motion does not carry. Commissioners, we are again back to the drawing board. This is why we're getting the big backs. Yes. That's a joke. Everybody following us, that's a big fat joke.
Thank you.
Okay.
I find that. Would it behoove us, should I make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, South Maui community recommendation for Plan A? You can try that by D and C.
Or you can do some kind of mix up thing, you know, there's that too.
I think we kind of all end in the same place because in the, one that Jackie, or not that one, the, um, what was the code? It has all the zoning in it already. So.
Yeah, so it sounds like, I think one of the concerns is if I'm, you know, distilling everything down correctly, is making sure that there is, or wanting to ensure there is consistency between the community plan and the zoning districts designation. So that there's, we're not creating problems when we don't have any problems. And make everybody's lives a little bit smoother to deal with. And so I guess we could have one more time from the department of what would ensure the most easiest, simplest designation to have.
So the department recommendation is what we recommend. I, I don't know any other way to say it. Um, and I, you could play with, with variations of TOC is too intense. You could say STC. And we're not going to lose, as we said, the, the underlying zoning still stands. What we're looking for is something that reflects that. Special purpose does not, it's not intended for that. But TOC or STC could fit. And so just throwing in another option for you to discuss is the possibility that if TOC is too intense, that perhaps STC would be more palatable.
Um, and that would allow for everything that is within their, um, 19.3 zoning district.
Light industrials included in TOC and it is not included in small town center as they're written. It would align with all their other uses. And there is, you could expand the small town center. There's a little area that is, um, what is it? Mixed use instead of employment campus. And that would be appropriate to expand into small town center. It is the area directly south of what is already designated small town center outside of the areas that are parceled.
Chair, if I may, or Director?
The other thing too, is if, you know, if, if, if the intention to move forward with what was presented by the CPAC, you don't need to take a vote to, to do that. And we can also return to this if you want to take it up at a later meeting. I, it would be great to handle it, but if we can't, we can't.
Okay. Um, so it sounds like we may be at option A for now, the CPAC recommendation. Commissioners, unless anybody has a separate idea. Okay. Commissioner Hippolito?
Thank you, Chair. So based on the director's, um, statements, what would it take for us to move it for, like defer it for a later, later time?
If I may, I think we just leave it as it is. We don't take any action and then we're just have the CPAC's version. Correct?
That's correct, but also too, if you do want to pick it up again later, you could, we could make a note of that in your, just after deliberation, you still want to discuss it later. That's, that's totally fine. It might give us an opportunity to talk with, um, Maui Research and Technology, Technology Park because they did not state any specific uses that they were concerned about. It was, we're worried that issues, uses aren't, certain uses aren't going to be allowed. Um, and I just, as a reminder, these are not about uses. They're about form, they're about how the community looks and feels. So I, it may give us an opportunity. We have been talking with Maui Research and Technology Park for years about this. And I think we've been consistent since the very beginning, saying that SPD is not the appropriate designation. But I, so I'm not confident. But I, so I'm not confident that we'll be able to get them to see that, but perhaps.
Okay. Um, yeah, so commissioners, it sounds like we can just have this on the side. Yeah? And, oh, Commissioner Keloja.
Sorry, I know I'm. Can I just ask one clarifying question? So the CPAC's concern with the putting that the red spaces TOC was that it's too high density, but in its current state as SPD, they can already do super high density. Is that a correct statement?
Sounds like it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes. That doesn't make a difference effectively, sounds like. Um, okay, so let us go then to the top of our agenda. Oh, yeah, well, we only have Vice Chair until five o'clock. So I figure we just go until five o'clock and then we can take a break when he goes. Okay, so, um, and I think we can tackle this in this time. So, um, section 3.3, the description of sub area 3, South Kihei, on page 78 to 79 of our plan. Um, in the memo from the department, we have the table that they made. Which again, is really nice and helpful and clear. Um, so commissioners, any comments or changes on this? Or you can let us know you think it's good as is.
Hey, Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dicos.
Uh, I think last time, love the tables, by the way. Absolutely great. But, uh, the vacant housing, you know, obviously we see these huge ratios compared to occupied housing. Um, and we discussed it's, it's not necessarily not occupied. They're just, they're, I don't know if they were transients or, or off island owners or whatever. But weren't we going to put an asterisk to explain? A footnote just to sort of elaborate what vacant housing really means?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, if you scroll up, or sorry, I have a computer. If you go to page one of the commission recommendations for the draft South Maui Community Plan Update, Section 3, Subarea 3, as of November 26, 2024, there is the under subsection 3.3, the general revisions to the sub area descriptions. It says to add a definition of vacant housing to the appendix.
Okay, yep, I see that. Thank you.
Um, any other questions for the department on this? Commissioner Hippoito.
Chair, the only question I have is future growth errors, MRTP 300 acres in parentheses, SPD or SPK. My question, my question basically is, is that since we have not really confirmed where we're going and we're going to bring that back later, how does that affect overall content? Other than that, I have no questions.
Um, I think this would just change to match whatever the map ends up being. So we would need to flag that to reconcile later if anything changes, but Director.
Just, yeah, just real quick for the commission to keep in mind that this is a non regulatory portion of the document. So it will get it, we'll make sure it's right, but it's not necessary to, to make sure everything is consistent at this point.
Thank you.
Uh, and just a clarifying question because the, um, testifier said that the area they have is about 400 acres and this is 300 acres. Is that because there's, it's accounting for the area that's already developed? Yeah, okay. All right, any other comments or questions on this or is everybody, oh, Commissioner Dicos.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I, I was curious because this, I mean, the tables are great, especially for planning. Um, I'm trying to find the, you know, the Maui Planning Department Forecast, the South Maui Plan Forecast Paper. They, they listed the the number of housing units that would be needed for the next 20 years, right? I think it was, I've seen 800 to 1700, but I think there was another quote, eight, um, like 2200. But I don't know if those, for those forecasts. First of all, I'm not sure why that's not in here. It seems like a, an important, uh, metric. And what the second question is why, would, if it was broken down by district, which I, I guess by sub area, I guess it wouldn't be, it'd be, it'd be nice to see that number, like next to vacant housing, uh, housing anticipated, something like that. So two questions. One, why do we not reference the number of housing expected for the next 20 years in this? And secondly, which I think I know the answer for, is it even possible to break it down by sub area?
Number of housing expected is for the entire community plan region. And that's not, that's the number of units anticipated to be needed. Not necessarily expected. It would be difficult to say how many units will be in each designation because there, there's a variability to the designations.
Right. Okay, so.
Ask, but it would be inaccurate.
Okay, so just to clarify my first question. So the South Maui Plan Forecast Paper states a low and high scenario for homes needed and, and, you know, in the next 20 years. I've, I've got 800 to 1700. I'm not sure if it's likely more than that. But that, knowing how many residential homes will be needed in the next 20 years would be a helpful metric. And it seems like it's referenced in a couple of forecast papers. Is there any reason we don't even, uh, mention it in this community plan?
Uh, the technical papers are intended to, to supplement the plan as it's going through the process. So looking at the land use, there is ample space for growth according to the, um, population forecasts. Those should be companion documents.
Okay, so we have a page in here that talks about the population forecast, right? We expect to see this many new people. And then we're going to have to accommodate jobs and housing and all that. So it'd be nice, I think it's a, it's a ratio, right, of that amount, how they get to the number of housing units needed. But, you know, if we, I guess what I'm getting at, if we're, if the high scenario is 1700 homes and we're planning for over 7,000 homes, seems to be an imbalance. So I don't know why we wouldn't have the 1700 as a reference point, just like we anticipate this population, we would anticipate needing so many homes.
Director?
Yes, um, what I would say, Commissioner Dicos, is that the, the fact that there, in the projects that are proposed, there are more units than the high range. But as you've seen with multiple projects across many, many years, they don't all stand up. You know what I mean? They, they adjust, they change. And so it, it doesn't matter so much that there's a mismatch between those things. I also will say to address your question about whether or not we should have those, that within the plan. What Planner Komkowicz mentioned is correct. You know, those, those technical resource papers or the tech, the resource papers that we produce to go with the plan are, are supportive of the plan. Like they are, they are meant to be part of the whole package of the plan. But like, like I've said before, this is not regulatory, this is not a regulatory section. And it's okay to say these kinds of things out loud if the planning commission wishes to, to recommend that change. We can, I don't think we can break it down sub area by sub area. That is not something that we're, we're capable of doing. But if, if it needs to be in the plan, we are open to the commission's suggestion for where it should be.
Okay, no, it makes total sense. You can't break it down by sub area. I, I, I understand that. I guess when I'm reviewing, you know, we get a, I think we, we have a project, you know, there's a lot of McKenna projects. We got nine, you know, 1150 homes going in. Um, and we're anticipating 1700 on the high end. It kind of puts in perspective how much more housing we're going to need when, with projects already approved. So I'm going off, bit on a tangent, but when I look at these and I see, you know, the 5,000 vacant housing, it's sort of nice to know where, where are we at with everything? What are we trying to achieve in 20 years? So I just throwing it out there, it'd be nice to know, to see that number as a reference. Like we anticipate on the high end to need 1700. Oh, and then reference the sources of that information. You know, similar to the, the tourist, you know, the visitor. Uh, we don't reference any of that, uh, in the general plan, the 33%, you know? So when we're trying to balance all of that, so just throwing it out there. Sorry to go off on a tangent.
Um, if I may, following on this line of questions. So we heard from one of the testifiers that, um, the tech park as an example is approved for up to 1,250 units. And I think that data exists for other entitled projects. Would it be possible within these tables to have a field for number of approved units with an asterisk that, you know, that would say this is as of the publication of this plan? This is how many units are entitled?
Excuse me, this is Jackie. That would require us going through every single permit ever issued. Because sometimes developers or applicants get an approval and then they don't act on it. But the permit is still good and I don't think we, it would take us years to do that research. Sorry.
If I can add to that, there was a time when I first started in the county where we had a GIS person who did keep track of that to a certain extent, but not to that level, not to, and I, again, I, I just, I very much want the commission to, to focus on those areas of this plan that are regulatory. And because the, this plan is consulted for two reasons. One is when it's, when we're reviewing projects. And think about the data that is relevant for us when we're reviewing projects. This is probably not data that is relevant for us. But also too, we look to it for actions, for the things that we need to do, uh, going forward. And, you know, that, those are the places where I really encourage the commission to spend your time is focusing on those places of this plan that, that assists the planning department with understanding what the community wants this, this place to look like in 20 years.
Uh, Commissioner Dicos.
Yeah, not to belabor, sometimes I get what, what the department is saying. This, like we, you know, you just mentioned another project, 1,200, knowing, wow, we only, the high end of expectation, 1,700, this project alone could provide 1,200 of those homes. Like I think knowing that is very helpful in our planning and our decision making. So, uh, it sounds like a sticking point, um, to keep it out. But, uh, I, I do think, you know, you know, knowing how many of those houses end up being built that are, end up in the vacant housing, you know, that may be something, uh, be flagged, but. Anyway, I would like to see, I don't know if, if that's something we can vote on to include language on what the end, what the expected, what the projected number of homes needed, since those studies have already been done for planning purposes. Is there resistance from the department that, that do sort of, um, add that? I know it's in appendix somewhere, but seems like the department is okay with projecting the population growth, but there's concern about putting in the number of homes expected to meet the growth?
Director?
Yeah, if, if the commission wishes for us to take what is in the, I think it's in the housing paper, in the housing paper and put it into the plan, we're happy to do that. I think what we're pushing back on is going through all of the projects that have been permitted in this area over the vast shoals of time to figure out how many units we can expect. Because like, um, like Jackie mentioned, it is, some of those projects are way dead, you know, it's, it's just not as good a measure. But if you're, if you want us to take what's in the housing paper and put it into the plan, we're happy to do that. It would be great to know where the commission wants it to go though. So that, that's the only thing I would add is that we're talking about section three right now, so perhaps this is something that commission wants to noodle on and think about where, where it would fit and we can certainly do that as well. So we're not opposed to that, that approach.
I, yeah.
Um, okay, so hold on to that, Commissioner Dicos. Uh, Vice Chair Thompson needs to head out. So, um, and it's five o'clock, so let us take a 10 minute break. And then we'll come back right to this point. Can you keep your, um, train of thought running in the meantime, Commissioner Dicos? Okay, so let us reconvene at, let's say, 5:13.
Yes, that's fun.
All right, everybody, welcome back to our Maui Planning Commission Meeting of Tuesday, December 10, 2024, regarding the South Maui Community Plan. When we left off, we were looking at this preamble description, section of sub area 3, South Kihei. Commissioner Dicos, do you have thoughts on where in the plan you would, uh, suggest that housing data, on needed use, units be incorporated into the plan?
Yeah, I apologize. I, uh, if I recall reading, there's a page that talks about population growth. I think this one sentence where would be, it might be appropriate there. Sorry, I can't tell the exact location.
Okay, yes. Think Steph has an idea of that, Director?
I suspect it is in a part of the plan that is not on, under consideration today.
But we can make a note of that, right?
But we can make a note of it to come back to it. I think any discussion of population is probably in the plan framework or section two.
I think I recall that section he's talking about, like the population is projected to increase from this to this.
Reading through the history right now, I think it's just beyond there. I think it's in section one, South Maui today. Yep, South Maui is home to 29,000 residents in 2019 and received 26,000 visitors per day, probably somewhere in there.
Or there was like the South Maui tomorrow or something?
Yeah, it's South Maui today. And then, yeah, there should be a tomorrow. How will our population grow?
Yes.
There could be a, a sentence added to there that says something like, we expect, based on population forecast for the plan area, the population may increase between X and X, our new resident, new residents over time, which equates to X housing units.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, Steph got that?
Do.
Okay. Um, all right, commissioners, anything else on this introductory, uh, sub area 3, South Kihei description? Or are we otherwise good to move forward? Uh, okay, sounds like I hear no objections. Okay, so we'll call that good. So pages 78 to 79. So next part on our agenda is section. Um, so next part on our agenda is section three point four, Areas of Change, number one, Central Kihei. Draft Plan Pages ninety-six to ninety-seven. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Lindsay.
Um, I didn't say, but I really appreciate the chart. Um, and also I appreciate the page numbers labeled here. I was very confused the the last of my community plan meeting. It's helpful, these having the page numbers on here. Thank you.
Yep, good feedback. Okay, so commissioners, page ninety-six to ninety-seven, we have description of Central Kihei, change envisioned, challenges and opportunities, and then the designation on the map. This is one. Yes, this is one that the department had a memo on previously given to us. I think the one dated September twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
The undeveloped parcels in the sea level rise exposure area?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so commissioners, this is one that the department had in their memo. This is another example where they're showing the Kihei community, Kihei McKenna Community Plan, so the existing designations, the CPAC recommendations, and then the department's recommendations. And I guess this is not necessarily the area of change, this is more the larger sub-area three map, but the area of change is within it. Um, so I guess for clarification, on the um main sub-area three map is where this department's memo from September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four comes into play. Sorry.
Do you want me to read the description of it?
Um, yeah, commissioners, are you finding this memo? Oh, yeah, I see thumbs up from Commissioner Lindsay. Uh, commissioners, are you finding this? Do you have questions? Anything you would like from the department? I guess, Director, anything would you would like to say about this?
Well, I'll get us started. Um, so we we're recommending making a series of changes to this area predominantly because the, and I I'll defer to staff to describe the conversation that happened to lead to this, but I'll talk about why we recommend changing it. So basically, these these changes were made to uh affect, to show, the recommendation was to designate all undeveloped parcels affected by state-recognized sea level, sea level rise exposure area or the SLEREXA as open space to prevent development in the SLEREXA. And the department's comment is that this is not the appropriate tool for this, um, for this. The the community plan is not the appropriate way to to prevent that kind of development. And furthermore, you know, and we're seeing this in Lahaina as well, so I'm, I apologize, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna talk in generalities, but basically what we're seeing is that we need a system in our county government in order to buy up these parcels. We can't just designate them. There's, there are rules. Uh, there's case law associated with this. Designating private property this way um is can result in a taking and we would highly recommend returning these back to those those designations. Um, in the future, we're gonna come talk to you a little bit more about the sea level rise exposure area because it is a really valuable tool for decision-making. Uh, this is just not the appropriate use of that. And I think Karen and Jackie can speak potentially and potentially Commissioner Ward to the the conversation surrounding this change so that you can understand the context that the CPAC was using to make this decision.
So these are all parcels where the sea level rise exposure area touches. Some of them it impacts differently than others. Some, it is anticipated that the entire parcel would be um affected by sea level rise, whereas others, it's barely on the parcel. That's one thing to take into consideration. Um, this was to prevent development where there will be impacts in the future. You also have recently adopted the, or since this was forwarded, um, the erosion hazard line was accepted as the up, the planning tool for the shoreline for the Maui Planning Commission. And you, the Maui Planning Commission is the body that has um the say over the shoreline development. However, the parcels do not have, the ones that were selected, as you will notice, there's some undeveloped ones closer, do not currently have development plans as far as the research by the people who proposed them for open space.
Sorry, can you say that last part one more time?
Um, the people who propose, or the commissioners, committee members who proposed these as open space, um, looked to see if the parcels had any development currently proposed on them. So these do not have development proposed on them, ones that were designated.
And sorry, it's the ones that CPAC designated?
When the CPAC designated, yes, as open space.
Okay. So the old existing community plan map, it looks like that shoreline area had no designation, or is that just a different color?
Yeah, so I I have a little history here, too. I had the same reaction when I first looked at this. And yeah, I mean, no designation is is correct. There are places where things are out of alignment. Um, you know, the the uh, we get a new parcel layer every year and things shift. Um, it's, it's very, so I think just at no point was this area designated. I don't know how that plays out when it goes to say if we had a project that was right there on that point. But I I'm guessing we could look at the zoning. We would use the zoning and the adjacent. And also, I think the ownership, I, this would be a place where we would it'd be great to have GIS folks, um, because we could show you the ownership. I suspect that the ownership of that point there
State of Hawaii.
Is state of, it is state of Hawaii. And so it didn't really, it didn't really matter. The community plan designation was, but we tried to fix all that.
Yeah, the parcels on the shoreline that are undesigned were because they were state parcels.
Hmm. Are they still state parcels?
One I clicked on was, but let me see, I can check a few. They're just showing parcel with no ownership. The only one was the point.
Happens to. Very nice. Okay, so commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have quite a bit to say. Um, as we heard today, you know, we do have this SLEREXA as a planning tool, like the director just said. So this is a planning tool. I believe Tara Owens mentioned that the erosion hazard line is not, we're not dealing with flooding, we're dealing with land loss, like it's, the land is gone. So this, we're using a model based on best available science. Right now, it's the twenty fourteen model, the three point two. That's eighty percent likelihood of land lost on that red line. That's what we, that's, that's the old model. We heard today that it's worse than that. Um, and whether we adopt the new models at some point, I don't know when that'll happen, but um, so we're trying to plan to avoid the catastrophe of what we know is coming, which we didn't plan properly in other parts of the island, where now we're dealing with Lahaina, West Maui, some of South Maui. Indianapolis, absolute nightmare where properties are have to move or they're fighting to hold the line. So I'm, I have a question for Corp Counsel, because I heard, you know, we always hear that, oh, you, you know, change my use, then you, that's a taking, you owe me money, or um, maybe Corp Counsel can can comment on that. My understanding, which is minimal, is that if there's been movement on the parcel towards a and there's a term for that, I'm not thinking of right now, that shows you have made efforts to develop that property, then I think those were, those are not, that would be considered a taking. But if there hasn't been, again, the word escapes me, a momentum in that direction, since you've owned the property, then the land use change is allowable. That was my understanding, and maybe if we do have Corp Counsel on, they could clarify.
Uh, yeah, I believe we have Mr. Andrew Nelson on the line, serving as our Corp Counsel.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Um, Commissioner Dicos, I um, uh, don't have a um uh, you know, a final answer for you today. Um, I will note this question for um follow-up. Uh, but I do not think that that um distinction uh between a a landowner who's taken steps to, you know, at least preliminary steps to effective development um would uh matter in the takings analysis. Um, I think that goes to the uh, um the issue of uh whether a property is developed for purposes of uh the uh exercise of native Hawaiian traditional and customary rights. Um, but I I will um clarify that and um work with Mike to provide you with that information. Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Okay, because it it seems like all of our land use changes, if that was a blanket taking, anybody that owned land that we changed the land use could call taking and want compensation, I presume. But I think, I assume there's guidelines. Sounds like we'll get to that. So I I have concerns about planning for the future and and keeping all undeveloped lands in the E H L um, for homes or for whatever they were designed for, so that's, that's my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Dicos. Uh, the director has something to add.
I just want to clarify one thing. Um, my my comment on takings is in relation to taking all economically beneficial use. So when you go from a designation like residential or s- s- um, small town center or anything that allows economically beneficial use, you're, that is, that, then you're running into the possibility of takings. So it's just the designation going, it's not changing designations across multiple designations, and I'll tell you, I'm the first one to scream, that is not a taking most of the time. But in this particular case, when you go from from a a a use that allows something to be done to a a use that allows nothing, that that is something that we need to be considering. And I I'm hopeful that Andrew and Hopper can um speak to that more. We also have someone who's really strong on our litigation team in the takings law, and I can follow up with her as well.
That would probably be helpful.
Yeah, makes sense. But I, uh, this is Andrew. Uh, yes, that that was well put by Director Blystone um, uh, on the summary there.
Okay, any further questions or any decisions on these designations? Or we can leave them as is for now and accept what the CPAC has? Uh, Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. My recommendation would be is that we table us until we understand the takings.
Okay.
Because I think we could make a decision that.
Okay, so flag for revisiting? Yes, got that, okay. Um, so that is this portion of the South Kihei Sub Area Map. All right, so then down on our agenda, the Central Kihei area of change. Any commission comments or changes on that? Okay, seeing none, I think for now, so everybody's good with the CPAC recommendation that is before us. Um, so the last one is the county-owned parcel, so page one hundred to a hundred one. Questions? Comments? Suggested changes? Everybody good with it, how it is? Okay, I see thumbs up from Commissioner Lindsay, thumbs up from Commissioner Hippolito. Okay, um, all right. Is there anything else while we're here in the three point three overall sub-area map that anybody wants to bring up? Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. Um, for discussion purposes, I think we need to address um the testifier this morning. I'm sorry, to be more specific, um, Roy Frampton's um testimony around the industrial park in, because that's right in that area.
Yep.
Um, from my recollection of our last discussion, that we did not want to be going out, doing anything outside the growth boundary. So I guess I would propose that we delay that as well until we have clear direction, which I believe the director indicated would be obtained.
Go ahead, Director.
Sure, I, so I had committed to having something for you by this time, but you'd be surprised how much can happen in a two-week time period, especially during the month of November. Um, so I just, we we don't have a solution yet. One, one thing that I have contemplated is potentially for those property owners, and I'll say this out loud because I suspect they are listening, um, who wish to be included in the urban growth boundary, they can work with their council members to initiate an urban growth boundary amendment amendment now, uh, which speeds along that process, then it'll, of course, it'll come to Planning Commission for your consideration and discussion. Um, and that way, it may make it go faster down the road. Uh, but I I, you know, I think it's really up to the commission. If you choose, if you choose to add these areas in, then we will process them as stated. I have the concerns that that I mentioned before, that the community had an extensive discussion on where growth should go in these two areas. that the community had an extensive discussion on where growth should go in these two areas that not, we'll just focus on this area, this area was not included in that. And and so the department is is not going to be initiating those. But of course, council members can do that, and we've processed things from council members all the time.
Okay, so we'll pencil that in for next time also. Okay, any other notes anybody wants to make for future agendas? Otherwise, we will resume our review in January. Yep. Okay, Director.
I just want to say to everyone, thank you so much for this last year. I wanted to say it at the end of the last one, we ran out of time. But I just am very grateful to this commission for your patience with me as I learned this new job. I can't believe that it's almost been a year. January 22 will be my, and I think I had a planning commission meeting two days after that. I am I'm so grateful to you all and for taking the time and attention you do for these long-range plans is is so important. They are setting the stage for what goes, what happens in that community, how that community changes. And I appreciate you taking the time. I know these are long days, and I I just very much thank you.
Well, thank you, Director. It's been quite a year. Yes.
It's only been two and a half months. Feels like a year.
We're not that bad.
It's fun, but.
Yes, I I would like to echo the director. I appreciate you all very much. I'm grateful to be in this space with all of you. Go, team. Okay, so I guess if there is nothing further for us to discuss, our next regular meeting is January 14, 2025. Our agenda says 2024. And yeah, so everybody has another hour and 15 minutes back in their evening. So good job, commissioners, today, way to stick it all the way through, basically, all the way through with hardly any breaks. So thank you for your time and effort and brain power and goodness. So happy holidays and
Happy holidays.
See you in January.